Do you rise?
What allegiance to reply of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, let's move on to the approval of minutes from the November 5th meeting, please.
Make a motion that we forego the reading of the minutes and approve them as presented.
Motion by Pillar.
Second.
Second by Wolf, discussion. All favor say aye. Aye opposed. Period, thank you. Approval of the agenda, any changes or additions to the agenda?
By one indication is no other than A B.
A B. Everybody, you should have got a hard copy of that, Casey, you see that hard copy? It should be for mandate machinery for the.
Okay, I thought that was a Claris one.
Yep, that's, that's.
Motion to approve agenda.
Motion by Wolf. Second, second by Stern. All favor say aye. Aye opposed. Thank you. Five A, Divide Street Project. Jared or?
Josh.
Josh.
Summary of the agenda. First item to touch on, the cores that we had done on Divide Street, that NTI was out to do. We haven't received the final write-up from them yet, but they gave us some preliminary core information. So Divide Street, the cores one, two, and three that they provided us were done on, in the area that was cement treated. We were anticipating a four inch, you know, it was planned out four inch pavement section there. There, the cores indicated some lower pavement thicknesses than what we would have expected. You know, three, three point three inches, two point nine inches, and two point seven inches for what the core thickness indicated. So I've asked the contractor to do our investigation as to what, what they think might have happened, why, why we ended up a little light there. Whether that, whether it's just isolated to these areas and it was chance that we had just landed on, you know, few areas that were light. Or, you know, whether that's representative of the whole area, we don't know that. So maybe good idea to do some additional coring out there to evaluate the rest of the roadway to see, see what thicknesses we ended up with pavement over there. So at this point, we're still kind of looking, looking to get answers on that. Maybe, maybe a good idea comes from to do some additional coring out there to see what, what the rest of the street ended up with for pavement section.
So you're saying we expected four inches there?
Yeah.
And that was where it was million overland?
This, these areas were, it would have been cement stabilized there.
Okay, so it was a full re.
Yeah, yeah, exactly, yeah. Um, yeah, I guess we haven't heard any, any information back from the contractor, got it from kind of middle of last week. So if the whole of their experts haven't had much time to further evaluate it, so.
Does it say how thick the, the asphalt or the concrete was?
Um, I don't, they didn't, didn't go into the concrete at all, their cement treatment base, I guess.
Right.
It's just the, just the paper that they were through, so. So, yeah, I guess on that, on that, we're still, we'll get a little more of a detailed report from geotechnical engineer. Up with the contractor to see what, what we can determine there. Any other questions related to that?
Did we also do core samples further to the west where we had the cracking and there was no concrete stabilization or anything?
Yes, yep, yep, and the, the pavement thickness is there. So what they, when, when you're doing a core over top of existing pavement, it can be a little hard to determine exactly where the old material is and the new, new asphalt. So they ended up, you know, what they had gave us was an inch and a half for one of them, one point seven five inches for the other. And the last one we think is, we're a little less comfortable with, it's three point eight inches of new asphalt mix. That may have just been, it was an area that was hard, very hard for them to determine what was new and what was.
And there we would have expected what?
Uh, two inches, two inches, yeah, so. So that, from what those are showing, there's not, you know, nothing really that's concerned jumping out. It's concerned over there, so that first, first block at the west end.
Okay.
The next item I have is a revised change order number three. At the last meeting, we had a, had a recommendation to give one day extension for the concrete valley gutter that was added at Second Avenue and Fifth Street. And one day for the replacement of the concrete pads and manholes. After, afterwards, we talked with the contractor some, and when they initially were, were, you know, were initially discussing adding the valley gutter, they had requested three days. When, when we were kind of trying to get them to expedite that work and whatnot. And I, at that time, was not aware of it, since then, I came across some correspondence. And it's a reasonable, it's a reasonable request at, you know, at that time, at, you know, they, we weren't anticipating, necessarily anticipating them bringing their crew back in to do the removals and would have been more of a process of the concrete contractor doing the removals in preparation of that site for the valley gutter. So revising the change order to provide three day ti- a three day time extension for the valley gutter. Just giving them an additional two days beyond what was discussed, granted at the last meeting. So we're extending it to October 10th for the milestone substantial completion.
Okay, questions for Josh on, on that? Any objections to adding that, making that pull of three days instead of two? Or three instead of one?
It would be, yeah, three instead of one on that particular item, yes.
Any questions for Josh? Now we can move on this now or wait until he's done with the engineer's agenda? Okay, let's, let's move. Go back to that.
So we have the contracted application for payment number seven. The majority of the, the requested payment is for reduction in retainage. Of reducing, reducing it down to five percent retainage versus the 10. And then there's also some miscellaneous other items on there, seeding. And one other item is requesting for payment of the materials for the chip seal for next year. They have some of the materials stockpiled on site for next year, so they requested payment on material costs for that. So they are currently requesting three hundred forty-two thousand eight hundred seventy-four dollars and thirty-six cents. We are reducing our recommendation based upon the previous recommendations of reducing payment for the patching and the additional concrete work as previously discussed to three hundred four thousand eight hundred eight dollars and sixty-one cents.
Now is that typical at this point here to, to drop that retainage?
Yes, yeah, yeah, once you reach certain completion, you know, when that's what's outlined in the contract.
Okay.
Yes.
So Josh, and what's the value, making money, and showing that, what is, will be left after the five percent, is that the five?
You're talking to the retainage?
Yeah.
Um, so currently, two hundred fifty-six thousand four hundred, two hundred fifty-six thousand forty-eight dollars and eighty-seven cents would remain to be held in the retainage.
That'll be the five percent.
Correct.
And that covers the cost of the chip sealing and miscellaneous stuff that will be occurring in the spring, or that's beyond that?
That'd be beyond it, so the retainage is five percent of the work and materials that are being completed.
Completed.
So, so the, as far as additional chip seal, that, number that has been.
Yeah. So that remaining five percent then, Josh, is that after a hundred percent completion and punch list is done? Everything is, everything is? After that one year, after that one year? Now?
When final completion is reached, it would be, it would be released.
Okay. Anybody have any questions for Josh on the payment number seven? Okay, we'll, we'll move on that after we're done then, what else do I got?
Uh, that, that is all I have.
All right, so let's go back to the cores. So since we don't have a summary yet, we're not gonna pay that billion, is that correct, or is that, since we don't know what's?
The, oh, you're talking the bill from NTI?
Yeah.
That, that's a, I guess you could look at it two ways, their, their goal was like thirty-two hundred bucks. And I, they're requesting their invoice is seventeen hundred or so, so it's kind of a portion of what they've, they've completed with, I guess.
Okay, is it typical to take so long to get core information back?
Uh, they're, they're taking.
It seems extensive.
They're ta- taking a little extra time.
Okay, because it's not emergency or anything, or?
Yeah, they're taking, it's taken, taken longer than we definitely anticipated.
So I'm assuming if we're in project, you ask for a core, they're gonna get you information back a lot quicker than what, what's happening now?
That, that.
Okay. Any questions, Casey? I just got one on the, on that he has the punch list. It says, I guess, for that, what's that?
On the punch list?
Yeah.
Basically, it's just that area, it's a term that's kind of used in the industry for a kind of a, an area that ended up holding for.
Oh, okay, all right, okay.
Not an overly technical term.
Okay. So I guess I want to attack these. Let's start, let's actually start with the first, the core. Where they're requesting seventeen, I'm gonna find out in here. NTI.
Seventeen, seventeen fifty.
Thanks, Marty. Okay. Is that, that's in the bills, so we can just address that in the bills, okay?
Yes.
All right, so then change order number three, revised change order. We're willing to give three days. For, I'd like to do, that, that is the recommendation by our engineer to give three days for the valley gutter extension.
I think we've been taking their advice so far, so I think it would be a good idea to do the three days.
Okay, motion by Wolf.
Sure.
Second, second Mr. N, discussion. So then are, are we going to? We're gonna, I guess, pull back money then, because you're not done on the, on the three days that we need to?
Yes, that's correct, so, so substantial completion was achieved on October 18th. And this, this change order would extend the contract through October 10th. So there would be eight days there that the city would need to decide whether they want to assess liquidated damages on or not.
But then would we do that, we then, I guess, the, the end of the whole project or?
Um, that, that could be done with this pay, have this pay estimate. Um, you could choose to, you know, withhold additional money there, um, you know, eight days, it's twenty-five hundred dollars a day. Um, so about twenty thousand dollars would be the level, yeah.
I have a question on liquidated damages, when we came in a week before that to get our seeding done, we couldn't do it because it was frozen and wet. I mean, the ground was wet and muddy, so our guy, our seeding contractor had to leave and we'd come back till it dried out a little bit and prep work. And then when he came back in, it took him a couple days to seed. So really, I mean, our concrete guys were done a week before this date. But it was the wait for the weather conditions and the ground conditions to set aside for the seed. You know, our seeding does, didn't even cost anywhere near that. So are we gonna penalize twenty thousand dollars for liquidated damages on, for, for the seeding? Well, it's, it's late season, it's, it's the end of the season, it's the end of the year, I mean, usually DOT contracts. Once that road is open to the public, the sidewalks are open to the public, that's your substantial completion. The seeding, the things that are done outside in the late season, you don't get penalized for, you know, liquidated damages on something high down. That, I mean, it's totally up to you guys, but I'm just, as a standard out in the field out there, it was open. You know, the roads were open, the sidewalks were open, everything was done up until that day, it's just that we had to wait for a good temperature for the guys to come back in, they made two trips down here to come back in and see, the first time they came down, it was, it was wet and it was cold. I mean, we got snow for the first week in October that really messed up. I mean, it seems like just a small window, but it messed up a lot of stuff, because I talked to you guys, had to leave, they had to come back. Our seeding guys, you know, they couldn't get done ten days before like they had planned, you know, just kind of a, you know, mother nature, they were gonna cause that. And I'm just kind of looking for your guys', you know, to take that into consideration when you look at the completion date. I mean, with the road, the sidewalks, everything else was done, it was open, it was cleaned up a week before that, it was just a matter of them guys coming in and spraying their seed and their mulch and then moving back up.
Right, I agree that, that things are usable, yeah.
And when they got here, they got after it, they got down, I mean, it was, you know, we touched a lot of areas and, you know, and, you know, they didn't waste any time. As soon as that window presented itself, they got in here and they got it done again. Table the decision to, you don't have to decide now, you decide at the end of the project.
Okay, um, you say this is the industry standard, I guess I've not heard that from you guys. Industry standard that, you know, substantial completion is done when things are open and usable, not when all things of the contract are done by, by the contractor date.
It's generally when all the safety items are done. On the strike, when it's signed, when, when everything's done and the traveling public is, is free to travel across it without coming into any safety issues, and that's usually the substantial completion, I don't know, such as the highway job.
Highway job.
It depends on the contract, yeah, substantial completion, my interpretation is all the items are done, we have a punch list to be done. So it's, uh.
He's referring to the DOT contracts, I mean, these are a little different, so.
Okay.
Yes, and contractual to the, the milestone, this is technically a milestone substantial completion date since all project items are not be, are not completed yet due to the chip seal that's scheduled for next year. It is defined as all work except for the twenty, twenty nineteen chip seal work. Is the way that it's defined in, in the contract.
Okay. All right, we have a motion, now we have a second, to increase from one to three on the valley gutter extension. Any, any more discussion? Wolf call. Wolf.
Aye.
Pillar.
Aye.
Stern.
Aye.
Over and over.
Aye.
Motion carried. Do we want to do anything now on the extension of the substantial completion date? Or we want to table it until the end of the project?
Like to table it? As far as damages?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, for damages, yeah. Table it, okay, I think that's a good idea too. So we will table, table that then. Application for payment number seven.
Is there a form of motion on the table now?
Oh, to table it, okay, we need a motion to, thanks, Mary.
Yeah, that was my motion.
Motion by Pillar to table the discussion of liquidated damages. Second. Second by Stern, discussion. Wolf call.
Pillar.
Aye.
Stern.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Over and over.
Aye, motion carried.
Okay, application for payment number seven, let's attack that now. Move to approve three hundred and four thousand. Eight hundred. Okay, motion by Stern.
Second.
Second by Wolf. Discussion. Wolf call.
Stern.
Wolf.
Aye.
Pillar.
Aye.
Over and over.
Aye, motion carried.
Uh, we have, under five A, we also have B and D.
Based on what you've approved as far as the payment, I'll prepare the requisition for the appropriate amounts, just need your approval to have Jerry sign it, but it's not any engineer.
We don't need a motion.
Should have.
We should have.
Consider sign it, yeah.
Okay.
So motion is to approve for Jerry's, any engineer's signature on the document that you put together?
Done with B and D request, yeah.
All right.
Motion by Pillar. Second, second by Stern, discussion. Wolf call.
Pillar.
Aye.
Stern.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Over and over.
Aye, motion carried.
All right. Marty, have I taken care of five A?
You've taken care of five A.
All right, thank you. Five B. The camper televising and location cleaning. All right, so the, what we were given from our engineers, and it was a recommendation was declined by mail, correct? And we went back and talked about what the benefit was.
No, actually, we didn't have to get approval motion, because it was initially at fifteen hundred dollars and we decided that wasn't enough, so that was withdrawn.
You're right. So then Josh gave us numbers on different percentages.
And the contract unit price for that type of work.
Okay. Does everybody have that copy in front of them? So we agreed that fifteen hundred was low. They decide where we want to come in at, what we want to suggest. Josh, have any discussion or requirements?
Yeah, I guess, just to summarize kind of what's outlined in that email, so contract unit price, we did have on the project for televising of main line sewer. Um, it was three dollars and ten cents, and that televising also included cleaning. Now typically, um, when we, when, some, or not typically, but sometimes we've, we've done it where the, the cleaning is separate from the televising pricing, uh, a lot of times they're really, real close in the costs, so fif- fifty percent of the three dollars and ten cents, um, that, that was, is the contract unit price. I would say is a reasonable, um, value for cleaning per length of foot of sewer. So that, you know, comes out to be a dollar fifty-five a foot. So what percentage of that did the city see benefit from? It's kind of hard to say, um, you know, when, when, when would you need it to clean it again? You know, what's the, you know, clean cycle of it? So same fi- you know, if, if you just say fifty percent of that cost, you're at thirty-eight hundred dollars and thirty-eight hundred eleven dollars and forty-five cents. You know, potentially less of, of percent, and then, then you would look at, you know, what is a percentage of that reasonable? You look at that, we didn't necessarily need to clean them today, we could have got by for another six months, a year, two years, whatever it may be. Um, it's still kind of, uh, you know, not, not, not an exact science necessary. That's, gives you kind of an idea of what would be a reasonable.
How many feet did we?
Two thousand four hundred and fifty-nine.
Out from the board? So then, and then, on the cleaning part of it, and it's on the contract price, so so I think I guess that pace would probably be in line with that.
Yeah, pretty similar.
So we're talking, talking a total project bill of ten thousand one hundred and seventy-nine, is that, and then you're telling us to pay thirty-eight hundred? Is that what it is?
It is. Yeah, ten thousand, that is, yeah, yeah. Um, and yeah, it's, you know, that, thirty-eight hundred dollars, what, thirty-eight hundred eleven dollars and forty-five cents would be paying the full value of the cleaning of the sewer, so then, then I guess the city could decide, hey, you know, whether we have to clean it prematurely, um, potentially, and maybe reduce from there. If we chose, um, to give you an exact.
But that's a cleaning and a televising, for thirty-eight hundred you're saying?
No, thirty-eight hundred would be. No, thirty-eight hundred would be fifty percent of the con- if if we reuse the contract unit price.
Right, would be seventy-six.
Yep, would be the seventy-six, and then if you reduce it by fifty percent since the city only saw benefit from that clean because the televising of that, the city didn't, I would say, didn't see any benefit from that.
They didn't see any benefit though, which you guys request us to do.
Um, I'm I'm a little confused, I'm trying to understand what, if if we paid them to televise and we paid them to televise throughout the entire city, and let's just for argument's sake, say everything was beautiful. Do we say because it was beautiful, we we don't pay you for, there there was no benefit for you guys televising, and I'm not so I'm trying to understand the argument, refresh it for me. I I know that we pay normally to to have these lines cleaned periodically.
Yep.
And that's and that's something that we pay to do, but as part of this project, we said we wanted to televise these lines and clean whatever is necessary as a as a result of what you find in these, the piping and stuff like that, correct?
Yeah, and and so thi- this work was done due to a manhole being hit by the contractor and asphalt material entering the sanitary sewer system.
Okay.
So when asphalt materials started showing up in the lift station, that's when.
Okay, so so the discussion here is, we we may not have had to do this had we not found some residue in there and stuff, and then we went exploring and we found some in there, and, okay, now I understand the discussion. So we have to kind of throw a dart at the at the dartboard and determine what we think the value or how much the contractor might have contributed to to the mess in the pipeline.
They've they've paid the bill, and they've asked you to cost share because there's some benefit to you.
Sure, yeah. Okay, I got it. So we're at the point right now where we're just reimbursing these folks for what they paid the other guys to do, okay?
And then, I guess my other question is, do you ever clean the lines and not televise it first?
You clean it first and then televise it, but.
Is it, oh, so you, so they they cleaned it and then they went televise it to see if it needed to be cleaned?
To show you that there's nothing left.
To show that.
I'm a little confused, why wouldn't you televise it and then clean it? Because if you didn't need to clean it, why would you clean it?
When I talk to them, I ask them that exact same question, and he said ninety-nine percent of the time, if you run your your, if you televise it first and there's one pedal down there, you have to clean anyways. And then you have to show them another time after it's all done, saying, okay, now the line's clean. And so they forego that first televising, and they just clean it, and and then televise it afterwards to show you that the line's clean.
Okay.
So now I'm taking another.
So televising isn't to show you what the problem is, it's to show you that it's.
It's both.
In this situation.
In this situation, if you're doing an investigation, then that will through a televised, but they said in in their experience, if you find one little thing down there or something's wrong, you gotta clean it, so they say let's just clean it and then televise it afterwards to show you that we cleaned it, or to show that they did they did do it.
Zoom backwards.
It does.
It does, it speeds up the process.
So where would you guys like to come to the cost share percentage of this?
I personally think that thirty-eight is a little low. They had some issues with it, they did create part of the problem with hitting the manhole. Um, but we did get benefit out of it, because like you said, in six months, we might have done it anyhow. What, at what cost?
Correct.
I don't know, fifty-fifty, I I don't know.
Fifty-fifty would be thirty-eight.
No, of the bill, not of their estimate, of what the bill should have been, according to what happened.
Yeah, okay.
Or according to the contract.
Okay.
Well, I'm gonna say this, like normally, you don't, you don't bring in, I guess, case unless we have problem area, you know, but it's not that, it's a normal like annual thing or whatever, so.
But this line here is something that we periodically do, preventive maintenance, cleaning on, Dave? Or is it like Casey said earlier, where we have slow flow or something?
I'm not real up on that, but we've got that sticker for cases, got the portfolio for that, but.
When the guys televise that, it started out at the higher, then it started to go down, because everything runs downhill. Once you got like two blocks north of, because you come down from the hospital to that corner, and then it makes that long stretch all the way out, they said there's a big dip in the line right there, because the water got really deep. We had to take the camera out twice and put kind of like some four-by-four wheels on it to heat it up higher, they said there is a there's a sag in the line right there, so that may be part of the problem where you guys have to go back in periodically because it slows down, because you, because the flow from one manhole, when you look down, it was just rushing through there. When we got farther down the line, there was always water in there, so it it just slowed everything down, so then, you know, your bigger sediments would probably slow down the deposit right there, but after we cleaned it, it pushed everything through, but that flow is still back up and just that way. Because there was just that little bit of sag, so it's gonna build that pool up before it starts flowing through.
Lift station one is generally cleaned about every eighteen months. They don't.
Lift station is.
The whole, right, they do clean the lift station.
And make sure the baskets are cleaned out and.
Your last branch of the line coming off of the streets going to the lift station, actually, that's down. That last branch gets smaller than there can be, I can see that as a potential problem as far as I think whatever the distances between that very last manhole, the pipe goes from a ten inch down to an eight.
But the line's never been an issue.
No.
It's not.
But I brought it to Nick's attention when they're there, I'm a little sure he knew that, he wasn't sure why, when they put the lift station in, they made that line bigger than, or made it smaller than what the rest of the lines.
The ten thousand one hundred and seventy-nine dollars is the entire project, not just this portion over here that we're discussing right now. That's why when we're looking at the order of magnitude here for cost sharing and stuff, it's reduced down to a smaller subsector of the entire project, right? I guess with that being said, I'm I'm comfortable with the fifty-fifty split on that that portion of it, so the recommendation of the three thousand eight hundred and eleven dollars and forty-five cents. That'd be my my motion that we approve that cost sharing.
Okay, we have a motion by Pillar. Second. Second by Stern, discussion. Roll call.
Pillar.
Aye.
Stern.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Over and over.
Aye, motion carried.
What was that number again?
Three eight one one point four five.
Okay. Who else?
That's all I have.
Okay, Stern.
I'm just gonna wait out for the half hour or something.
Good, good.
Uh, I talked to the guys, the crushing for the reset block, and then we'll start bringing in some equipment this week.
Great.
Uh, so hopefully, to get set up and be running sometime next week.
Just put them in touch with Dave then, and then get here.
Yep, I'll be gone next week, but soon as I get back, I'll touch base, so I I don't, they never told me how long it was going to take. They could be here for two, three weeks.
So this will be crushing and moving to.
So it's not quite right that top ward existed, your your other piles out.
And Dave, you want them to be a little further east from where that other big pile is?
Yeah, a little bit farther.
Away from there, yeah.
There's a lot of room out there now.
There is a lot of room out there now, yeah, it's kind of nice. Alright, eight A, building permit, Matt Claris.
He has that building out there on the side road, it's the old Vice Auto Works store. Um, his renter wants to add on to it, so he is having the land re-surveyed to make more room. And he's gonna just add another garage space to the east of the original, so it's got that house on top of the garage. And then he's just abandoned the garage on the side.
Adding up to the east side of it, is that what?
It's like this one that has the deck off the second.
No.
Okay.
That's all that means.
Okay.
Yeah, the same construction.
And we're not talking about any variance, it's just because it's in the industrial zone out there.
Yeah.
Do we still need a motion?
Yes.
Okay.
I like a motion that we approve the building permit.
Okay, motion by Pillar. Second by Stern, discussion. All the favors say, I'm sorry, roll call.
Pillar.
Aye.
Stern.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Over and over.
Alright, motion carried.
And then, building permit, D B for mandate machinery down at their new location downtown. J and L Auto.
He's doing some remodeling inside, nothing major, but he's adding another bathroom, and he's kind of rearranging the floor plan a little bit, but adding the bathroom will change the value, so I had to get him a broken permit.
Alright, yeah, so.
And it's commercial.
Yep, and no change in the footprint, okay?
Motion to approve.
Okay, motion by Wolf. Second by Stern, discussion.
So on the before picture, it looks like there's two restrooms out and out.
In that one third, but he said.
They're demoing one of those out and kind of relocating that over into the other room there.
Yep, he's making that the front room where the two bathrooms are, he's making that into an eighty-eight bathroom. But in coverage, so he's putting that little tiny closet size one in turn.
So they're doing away with one and just and relocating it basically, and then make getting them up to code for eighty.
Yep, and then the second one, that's gonna be an employee room, so that'll be only accessible to you guys.
Gotcha, okay. That's all.
Okay, for motion and a second. Roll call.
Wolf.
Aye.
Stern.
Uh, Pillar.
Aye.
Over and over.
Alright, motion carried, thank you.
That reports water and sewer. And street guy's not here. Dave?
Nothing at this time, I've already ready for orange schools, Ben's adding streets, trying to API some of them, check, but haven't had enough, so I got to really follow closure all the ways.
And you've got all your dump zones.
Yep, got all of.
Provals from those people and.
Yes, yeah.
You know, we're miser about that land behind.
Oh, well.
But, yeah.
I never talked to him because he's got building material on there, there's gate and stuff, so I never.
So we'll see, we'll take that stuff north to over.
We drive over by the tree nursery, just take that across the highway here.
Alright, uh, finance blessing.
Nothing at this time.
Please, fire.
Uh, with regard to the uh fire group, they've had six runs in the last couple of weeks, all of them have been rescue type activities, so just uh general worries and and awareness that we're at that time of the year where the roads do start to get slippery and everything, and I I received the calls, you know, quite a number of rollovers and everything like that, so just caution to the public that we do it every year, we just need to be safe out there. And then the fire department is just looking at some year-end purchases of some miscellaneous, hold this, and some hand tools and things like that to finish up their budget here. That's it.
Thank you. H C D.
Everybody don't have anything to report on, other than the fact we do have our public hearings scheduled for the Renaissance thing on Wednesday night, so then after that all of the information will come to you for requests.
You do that here at City Hall and. Time is that, Pastor?
Seven.
Alright, let's go to ten A, Southwest Water. Delightful memo from them, we got. Uh, with the rate increase. Casey, you want to talk about that or?
Not to you. No, over the years, it's been every year, we had some, uh I guess rate. Rate, I guess, increased in this last year, it's a pretty big, because it's gonna be D M E right in hiding this stuff like January here. That's a pretty big jump in, in all this money, but I was like talking about, I mean, making that making that ordinance where that, I mean, is, our rate is just like a dollar for a dollar and a half above what we pay, you know, so that, I mean each time that the rate goes up and, you know, it'll just automatically go up, not that we have to raise the rates, you know, it's I guess, at the board, I guess, like, where I guess that level each time, so.
And this isn't just.
Language for that?
It's not just us, right, it's every Southwest Water customer.
Every Southwest Water customer, not the increase of eighty cents for a thousand, so I'm working with Midwest assistance to come up with some numbers so that we can stay ahead of this. And still meet our obligations for our revolving loan funds and stuff. So we'll probably have something to present to you next meeting, uh, or the meeting after that, for sure. And I get, like Casey said, we're kind of looking at, if it would make more sense to just adopt a resolution saying we'll be a dollar twenty higher than whatever Southwest Water is charging, or we want to set it high and leave the goal for a couple of years and because basically, uh, in some of the emails going around, among the different auditors, they're anywhere from a lot of them have gone to that where they adopt a resolution saying we'll be anywhere from a dollar forty to a dollar eighty is what rate has been on the emails I've seen, so everybody's kind of doing that rather than having to read, adjust their rates every year through a resolution by the board, or adopt or change our ordinance to just include that our rate will be this much more than what Southwest Water is charging so that we meet our obligations.
Do you think during that time, when we receive letters like this from Southwest Water, it'd be good for us just to publish that straight in the newspaper so people see that that's happening, so they don't think it's just us increasing the rate, it's coming right from Southwest Water, or it's?
It's pretty easy to, we can put something on our website saying, we know that the rates are that we've gotten the new rates from Southwest Water, so, and if we adopt the ordinance or resolution saying we're gonna be this much above we would obviously put it on our last billing of the year before the new rates take effect, saying effect at this date, your new rate is going to be.
Yeah. Okay.
I don't know if it's necessary for all the detail, but maybe just a general percent increase by Southwest Water or something like that, so it's understood that that's why there's, you know.
Yeah. Okay, so.
That's, just more or less, yeah, well, sure, try to have something for you by Monday's meeting.
Unfortunately, there's, they can bump it whenever they, what's the.
State government has to approve theirs as well, so, I mean, there is still some checks and balances.
Ten B, Ratham, mayor audit audit letter.
This thing here for letter, it said that your independent audit, their fee will not exceed six thousand three hundred dollars for them to conduct the audit of our year ending twelve thirty-one two thousand eighteen, they generally come out of February, early March to conduct the audit.
And we need a motion then to approve to have them.
To have them do it.
Come do it then, yeah.
So moved.
Yeah, motion by Wolf. Second, second by Stern, discussion. Roll call.
Wolf.
Aye.
Stern.
Hi.
Keller.
Hi.
Over and over.
Alright, motion carry. Alright, so, we did have the P D O's agenda on the agenda, Monty?
I did not put it on the agenda.
Okay.
I just gave you some notes regarding the fact that the city can put poles, but it would be all at our cost, and I'm still trying to get some information from some of the different sign companies about options to just wrap the poles. It's a final wraparound and to dress them up rather than replacing them completely. And there is some information Buster had shared with us about some possible grant funds available to, that we'll look at, you know, if we're eligible for that, to try and replace some of them if that's where we want to go. Uh, it will get quite spendy, and then there are still questions about them putting the LED heads on, whether it's the rolling of the overhead or underground wires, if they'll work with the different poles or not, so...
Yeah. Thanks. Alright, that takes us down to proposal bills.
Just a couple on the desk that we entered today. You want to discuss the N T I one now?
Yeah. So the bills, we have that, that N T I bill, so how do we wanna deal with that, Monty, what, what do you think's the best way to...
Well, I don't know, apparently they are sharing information with the engineers for what they're coming up with. And as Josh said, this is basically just a little over half of what they had quoted. Now, if there's gonna be additional costs for the report itself, I'm not sure. Or is this actually the total bill here?
Because they, they went, you know, they put the bid together, they went and did the course samples, there's still a little bit more, uh, engineering, if you will, or evaluation on this here. They didn't anticipate necessarily at the time that they did the course, that they were gonna come back again in the spring to do additional course in their original bid, correct?
They're, they're supposed to do six course, and then take them back, and then run the lab analysis on them.
Okay.
They've done the fieldwork, they've done majority of the lab work, we just have to get the written report from them on what they found. So, yeah, I think a partial payment to them is appropriate.
Because what they've billed us for right now is everything that they've done, including their are we gonna see a subsequent bill for the actual report that they're gonna...
I'm sure you will, I'm sure you'll get the balance of the bill when they're done, so they're probably just billing you monthly.
Okay. I don't see my reason why you want to pay them for what they've done, that's all. I would, I'd make a motion that that's encapsulated with all the rest of the bills, so I'll make a motion that we just pay the bills as presented.
Motion by Keller? Second. Second by Stern. Discussion. Roll call.
Keller, hi. Stern?
Hi.
Wolf?
Aye.
Over and over.
Alright, motion carry. Be adjourned. Thank you.